Mr. Harris and Paul Williams prepare the place.
I do have a thought. Thank you. Thank you for this week coming around to take a prayer. Thank you for all of you who showed up for that hour. Help us just carry that out for the rest of the week. Bless us just to carry on the business of camp. Bless everyone here, and then we ask, amen.
Let's all be faithful to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we have a couple of items to change on the agenda. We're going to take off the approval of the amendments for the April 16 meeting. We're going to add a decked session for personnel, and we will have a conference session. Are there any other items to change today? Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I will.
Second, all in favor of approving the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Skip that, or are you ready to go?
I'm ready to go, Mr. Chairman. Come on up. Mr. Chairman, tonight, we have the pleasure of recognizing two groups of individuals from county government who, on March 15, 2019, performed rather heroic and also very smart acts, which may well have saved the life of an individual who was in the creek kayak. On March 15, 2019, the Catusa County 911 dispatched the fire department to the creek near the school in order to rescue a lady who was attempting to get out of the creek from her kayak with her friends and had lost her paddle. The individuals that the Catusa County 911 involved were Angela Moore, Laura Parker, Michelle Terry, Megan Parker, and Yvette Shirley. The fire department individuals were Jim Blight, Brad Buchanan, Brad Dedman, Derek Burkhardt, Greg Wheatley, Josh Venture, Brandon Cruz, Preston Morton, and Justin Moore. We have prepared to bless these two departments.
Gentlemen, ladies, if y'all would come up, please.
The patient had a cell phone and was able to stay in touch with 911. And they told the patient an app to use, that would sound the same way as the app, to help the rescuer's find her.
Chief, Chief, come on up here and elaborate on this.
Well, some of the conditions they were confronted with from the fire department standpoint was rapid water, was from due to all the rain that we recently have had and was experiencing. So, from the dispatch standpoint, there was a lot of creativity as far as staying in contact with the girl the whole time, getting on, using the Google app to pull up stuff. So, you know, this new media stuff is really a big advantage to all of us, to try to pinpoint an ideal for where she was located at. And so, that was very creative from the dispatch standpoint. Fire Department, when they arrived on the scene, immediately deployed a boat to get into the water. And so, I'm walking down the creek bank and coming in from a different direction. So, there was kind of a two-fold to come in from different directions to try to locate her exact location. She was in between, her canoe went down and got caught in between some trees and brush and that stuff. So, once they, they could probably tell you a little more detail of their work than they did in the creek itself. I wasn't there in that part of it. But, listening to the things that they did, you always have the risk when you do some type of rescue like that. There's always that risk of falling into the creek or even uh, in trouble yourself. So, they worked really good, so they not only pedaled extremely hard, they exerted a lot of energy. So, and the water was cold. So, the work that they did, all of them performed together. And you see how many people it takes, dispatch receiving the call, staying calm, talking to the civilian, and working together with the fire department, dispatch on the fire department app, and working together as a team, how many people it takes to pull off a rescue of that type of nature. So, really proud of everybody who came out and worked that app, dispatch, being creative on the red yellow, and Google Doc, and even, I think, an app. Is there ever an app involved that you told her to go to? And what does none of that have?
It was just, you know, you just started on the one side of the screen.
So, they, they were listening to the sirens, see which direction to give more pinpoint accuracy of where she was located. So, good creativity, proud of everybody that worked together. They have potential excitement, good help.
Thank you for your department. Thank you for all of you. Y'all kind of send some hero behind the scenes. You got a job, you know, right now. Stacy, what are you doing back there?
I was preparing the eye.
You ordered mine in uniform. Come on up, come around here. You're in group right now. That's right. Your part is blank.
I mean, burp.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight as well.
Mr. Travis up here. So, tonight, we're going to give a Star Award. We actually have two Star Awards tonight. So, the Star Award goes to a county employee who's done something to go above and beyond. And so, we've got two tonight. I'm gonna let Travis kind of goes in.
Two employees that were nominated to the award were Kim Sawyer, Chelsea Ho. These are two remarkable women who took a position in the county and then transitioned. And I would start with Kim. Kim was hired as Kim Sawyer as a park attendant at the airport. She took a park attendant job, and she took that job, she started to grow, she started creating new entertainment options, opportunities. And she started finding ways to pay for them by submitting a grant. Besides just being a steadfast person that we can count on for everything, she also leads the way. And here's a few of her highlights. Thousand dollar grant for homeschool PD. We Play Kids she created, Fun Fridays she created, Nerf Wars, which has been a intensely popular birthday party thing. So, a lot of those things come together, and it's not just somebody who was hired to be a park attendant. Somebody who took that job and made it into a really great position for the county. And then Chelsea Ho. Chelsea started with us a year and a half ago as our office receptionist. At the time, I knew that she had the capability of being a lot more. So, not only had she started handling all her disc golf, created disc golf tournaments. Our next one's the Bigfoot Classic, she created, just as you guys know. But she's also making mathematics. She had our biggest disc golf tournament, over 45 people, Max Art Course Canhold. She's also a certified archery instructor. Both of them, as soon as they finished this tonight, are in a rush off and teaching class. So, we had to get them in there. Both of them are very special in our department, couldn't be, communities needs without people who do it. They make me look good every day, so I just want to take a chance and thank them.
Come on up.
And I just want to add, Old Grant Department, I think, does an amazing job of offering these kinds of programs. And the rest, not just about baseball and softball and... You know, the old programs that we normally think about, they do a really good job of offering all types of programs, some that Travis just mentioned. And these ladies are really crucial in that, so.
Thank you very much. Skip, Skip Reddick, sir. Thank you, ladies. Don't shoot anybody.
Reverend Dunne?
Yes, sir.
We have a proclamation establishing the National Day of Prayer in Catusa County. Whereas the National Day of Prayer has a long history in the United States. As the Continental Congress directed that the Day of Prayer be adopted in 1775 as a time of prayer informing a new nation. Whereas John Adams declared May 9, 1798, the Day of Prayer as a day of solemn humiliation, fasting, and prayer, during which citizens of all faiths were asked to pray that our country may be protected from all dangers which threaten it. Whereas Harry Truman signed a bill on April 17, 1952, proclaiming National Day of Prayer as the law of the United States. Whereas Ronald Reagan in 1988 amended the law by designating the first Thursday in May each year as National Day of Prayer. And whereas the law requires that the President of the United States issue a proclamation each year designating the first Thursday in May as a National Day of Prayer, on which people of the United States may turn to God in prayer, mediation, at churches, groups, and individual. Whereas the National Day of Prayer is a time for all people of all faiths and beliefs to pray together in their own way for deity's guidance in the seven centers of power: government, military, media, business, education, religiousness, and family. And whereas the National Day of Prayer's mission is to communicate with every individual the need for personal repentance and prayer to intercede for the United States. Whereas the National Day of Prayer is not limited to any particular religion, but is universal in its application to all religions practiced in the United States. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of Catusa County, Georgia, the governing authority of Catusa County, desires to establish a National Day of Prayer as a time when the citizens of Catusa County of all faiths and beliefs may pray for the United States, the state of Georgia, Catusa County, our men and women in uniform who bravely defend our country, our law enforcement officers, our firemen, and all those who serve to protect the lives and property of the citizens that they may be protected from all dangers which threaten. And whereas in perilous times of terrorist attacks, wars, and natural calamities, the United States of America, the great state of Georgia, and Catusa County observe the National Day of Prayer as a fitting acknowledgement of our nation's religious history and tolerance of all religious beliefs. Now therefore be resolved and ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Catusa County that the citizens of Catusa County may observe the National Day of Prayer on the first Tuesday, first Thursday, in May 2019 as a day of prayer and mediation. Be it further resolved and ordained that the citizens of the county may, on the National Day of Prayer on the first Thursday of May 2019, set aside a time of prayer and meditation and solemn humiliation that the United States, the state of Georgia, and Catusa County may be protected from all dangers which threaten from within and without. Be it further resolved and ordained that on the National Day of Prayer, the citizens of Catusa County may give homage and honor and pray for the protection of the residents of Catusa County, serving in the armed forces of the United States, and as sheriffs, deputies, police officers, firemen, and emergency medical professionals, and all who serve to protect our lives and property. Be it further resolved and ordained that a copy of this resolution be spread on the minutes of Catusa County and that this written proclamation issued for publication whereby the Catusa County commemorates the National Day of Prayer in the year of our Lord 2019. So resolved the second day of May 2019, Board of Commissioners, by Stephen M. Henry Chairman, attest, Melissa Hennan Clerk.
Do I have a motion to approve this? Sir? All in favor of approving the proclamation, say aye.
Aye. Another proclamation, Mr. Chairman. Osteogenesis imperfecta awareness week, May 5 through 11, 2019. Whereas osteogenesis imperfecta, OI, is a group of genetic disorders characterized by fragile bones, also known as brittle bone disease. And whereas individuals with OI are affected throughout their lives. There are different types of OI, which range from mild to life-threatening, distinguished by signs, symptoms, and genetic factors. And whereas O may cause a number of symptoms, including weak muscles, brittle teeth, spinal curvature, and hearing loss. Those affected by most severe types of OI may experience frequent bone fractures, as well as blue, sever, short stature, and respiratory problems. And whereas there is currently no cure for OI, and treatment thereof is primarily focused on minimizing fractures, surgical correction of deformity, reducing bone fragility, and maximizing mobility and independent function. And whereas increased education and research are necessary to develop more effective treatments that will provide a better quality of life for those with OI. Now therefore, the Catusa County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim May 5 through May 11, 2019, as Osteogenesis Imperfecta Awareness Week in Catusa County. So resolved the seventh day of May, 2019, Catusa County Board of Commissioners, Stephen M. Henry Chairman, Melissa Hennan Clerk.
Second, all in favor of staff?
Aye.
Correct? You want to come up? Come on up. We're with this one of our prime employees, ladies of fire. Just wait.
And live and all major appearances, we got a lot of space now.
Roger, come on up.
Roger Watson, Catusa County resident. I want to keep something about the Commissioners regarding the railroad crossing at Graysville. In particular, my Commissioner, the Graysvill area commanders, Mr. Cutter. Understand that there's been some meetings with the railroad and that some conversations I also had with Representative Wayne Gill and Jeff Moss that there's still some thoughts in the long term for overpass, but my comments are short-term. And it's been needed, I guess, with just a straight answer, if possible, on the railroad. And we know that struggle right from the start, or getting answers from them. Want to make sure that everyone is looking at the fact that the Graysville double track is 6,600 feet long and has 7,000 cars a day going across it. Fifteen minutes away is the Tom Hill double track. It's 11,000 feet long, almost twice as long as Graysville. And there are zero crossings in that area down there. And the way that they seem to like the Graysville to stop is because it's the closest one to the Chattanooga area. And during rush hours and things, it's critical that the traffic is backed up a full two miles to east Brandon Road in that, it's storm traffic during rush hours, when in fact there was, there's nothing much going on at the Tom Hill area. Tom Hill area has that 11,000-foot double track, zero crossings on it, or zero cars, or being stopped by that. And if at all possible, it's likely that the dispatcher doesn't even know that, doesn't take into account. It's convenient and it's easy to do the closest one. And in some cases, that makes sense. But if it's 10 minutes away, 15 minutes away for the double track at Tom Hill, we sure would like them to consider that as a first alternative. It would just be appreciated, no cost, it's a scheduling thing. And that's all. And actually, I've talked with some of the railroad guys that are working on the track at Graysville right now, putting a new switch. And they don't have anything to do with it, obviously, but they're aware of it. That it's used the most at Graysville and at Tom Hill. Not sure appreciated anything about the meetings, that maybe it's going to come up over railroad and understand that Mr. Cutter is aware of that, and appreciate their thinking about that. Last thing is, I again urge the county to watch the spending. And that the requests of the staff and the Commissioners and everybody to change policies is a dangerous, is a dangerous thing. And in particular, I guess I'd remind everyone, you know, these policy changes, they come about with three votes now. Everybody needs to be cautious, because what you're asking for can be changed very quickly with three votes going the other direction in a short time. So, be cautious about the spending that is being considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, George Battersby, District 4. The county manager cannot hire Department Ted, the commission does, but yet she can fire them. That's a very redundant rule. The county manager, in my opinion, totally mishandled the removal of Dennis Therediah, 911 director. She displayed her total lack of business protocol. His word against her word, it should never have come to that. I believe her problem is personal, and he didn't bow down to the lady. She did not let her do her due diligence regarding reprimands, warnings, etc. When someone is let go or dismissed, it should never come as a surprise if management has done their job professionally. When you call them in there, they know what it's for. So, that wasn't done. And certainly, don't tell his employees that you're firing him before you fire him. Very unprofessional. And then, we're interviewing his replacement before the 30 days are up from this formal hearing. I think Mrs. Vaughn is in way over her head and probably needs to resign to avoid the county for further embarrassment. And this Vaughn should not be allowed to take the $42,000 luxury SUV she coerced the county into buying home. She should have been given the $500 a month as the previous county manager had, where she can buy her own insurance and pay her own income tax. There's no excuse for it. There's plenty of, there's plenty of old cars around here, county cars, that she could drive. And calendar year... Am I there? Did you take? Somebody cut me off?
Hey, have you found a good enough deal? Get some. Is it working now?
All right. She could have got any car she wanted with that $500 a month, it wouldn't matter to anybody. Our county attorneys are actually part-time county attorneys. They're not real county attorneys. They own their own law firm, and they do this part-time. Last calendar year, they billed the county somewhere in the area of a quarter of a million dollars. And they can still represent other businesses like contractors, developers, and builders in Catusa County. At a zoning board meeting, when a piece of property is rezoned from residential to commercial, there's a tremendous increase in property value. The same county, same attorney, county attorney, could be one of the developer's attorney, for all we know. And this would mean a huge increase in the value of that person's property. And we know after the yes vote on the T-Splash, that the yes vote was funded by developers and builders of the area. And hopefully, this isn't a way of paying them back for their expenses. I think we need a full-time county attorney that has no affiliation with any business in the county. And for what we're paying them, and perhaps a little more, we could certainly justify it. And one way to justify it would be to cut off Jeff Moss's 80 or 90 grand handout we give him every year for god knows what. There was talk also changing the agenda for appearances, where we would have to make an appointment a week in advance and give the topic that we're going to discuss, which to me is a horrible interference with our First Amendment right, free speech. That will never work, and we will pick it outside, on the road, wherever's...
All in, do we have any questions, Anne? All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Anne.
Thank you.
Don Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proposal for the payment vote on the house, the road bridge replacement, the county was awarded a grant for local bridge replacement from GDOT in two thousand eighteen. GDOT is planning on replacing the bridge, overdrive creek for an estimated project cost of one point eight-five million. A design-build project requires the county to acquire the necessary easements. The county has been using CTI to negotiate temporary easements. The easement on the southeast corner of the project will require the permanent relocation of the entrance of the driveway and of James and D of Maradona. The Maradona's requesting, as part of the agreement to sign the easement, that the altered section of the existing driveway be resurfaced with asphalt instead of gravel. Wright Brothers Construction, who has replaced the bridge, was awarded the contract for the bridge replacement, submitted a quote to asphalt the section of the driveway that will be altered in the amount of ten thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. And basically, the new bridge, where the guardrail for the new bridge goes up, it will pretty much block the Maradona's driveway. So what they're doing is, as part of the easement, is their driveway will turn right ninety degrees, and then it'll turn left ninety degrees, so that section that's altered would be asphalt. One of the existing will be asphalt.
Do we have a motion?
Salute.
Second. Do we have any questions, Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question. Buster, as I understand, is the GDOT, the state of Georgia's, going to build us a bridge for one point eight-five million dollars? In return, GDOT is asking us to pay the ten thousand dollar direct.
Uh, Thompson. The GDOT gave us the money for the bridge, but it's on the county to acquire the easements.
This is one of the hurdles.
So this is one of the hurdles of getting that easement on the left side, was the Maradona's property, and that driveway was right there for the construction part. So be it for temporary construction, move the driveway, but once it's done, it's it. So there's no, we're not acquiring permanent easement, it's just a temporary move, turn it back and then GDOT. Very little is going to be on the other side, there's really not a driveway effect. These folks, they were more, I can understand, and were coming in there and changing the dynamics, probably come out, and it would, it'd be something that they wouldn't have to make that.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. When is the, all approval, everything else, when is the proximate start?
Estimated for one decent.
Started, this is.
What's estimated? Nine days.
Nine days.
Say the nine or one-twenty.
Okay. This is a different cruise, but I'm not sure.
This is, this is.
Yeah, this is.
Look at, at getting estimate from somebody else besides the property. Well, we don't know. What we did want to do is bring somebody else in, and then they blame each other for what's not right, you know? So Wright Brothers is a building project, they're going to have to disprove, they're going to be right there, so it was just easier just to let them manage, instead of trying to manage and prove coming in. So that's basically.
What's the length of it? About four. Loud up speed?
No. This, this to give you an estimation, you're going around the hillside into a sharp curve,
approaching the creek bridge, approximately fifty feet from the creek bridge is where they drop off the driveway and go out to their house. What you're stating is that they want to move the driveway further east, then they'll turn right and go down, and then all they will pay is what they're moving, they're moving the driveway, which is approximately two hundred feet.
Yes. There won't be a guardrail where their driveway is now, so we're having to move their driveway, so that's pretty much what we're doing. Do we have a motion, have a second? Do we have any other questions? We already got it. Melissa Robson, please.
Fisher Stevens?
Yes.
Fisher Cutler?
Yes.
Sharon Henry?
Yes.
Fisher Harris?
Yes.
Fisher Long?
Yes.
That's for your next.
This is a request of approval of fuel management equipment upgrades to Public Works Department, installation of fuel center at the sheriff's office, and closure of the fuel dispenser and fuel tank at the courthouse. Fuel management system that currently serves the county is outdated. The equipment that is used to dispense the product is obsolete and partially unavailable. Currently, the county has two main sites that provide fuel for county vehicles, one's at the courthouse and the other's at Public Works. The underground storage tank at the courthouse was installed in the eighties. This tank is not equipped with any kind of cathode protection, and it hasn't been inspected on a daily basis for leak protection. EPD has expressed concerns about the tank, and installation of a new fuel center at the sheriff's office, upgrading the system at Public Works Department, and closing the tanks at the courthouse would cost two-eighty-two, one-sixteen. That would be from eighty thousand from O-nine splash, and two, two-hundred, a little over two-hundred thousand from fourteen splash. So the, the upgrades at Public Works would be roughly fifty-one thousand. The installation of the fuel center at the sheriff's office would be approximately one-eighty-eight, three-fifty-one. Closure of the tank at the courthouse would be twenty-four, five-thirty-seven, and then the programming for the FM line would be eighteen, two-sixty-eight.
Do we have a motion?
Salute.
Second. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This last one is the proposal approval of the contract in over Jill to suit that consultants. Services are necessary to manage the groundwater and surface water, sampling, collection, testing, and reporting for landfill sites one and two. Both EPD government owners, Jill said that we'll conduct sampling and reporting on a semi-annual basis, with a fence plan this month, that is this month in November, based on the sites. Through monitoring plan, the lump, some budget required to perform this work is four-seven-thousand-nine-hundred dollars for two thousand nineteen, and that's eleven thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars per site twice a year. Once completed, the final report will be submitted to EPD towards GPD, and two copies will be submitted to the county within sixty days. And basically, what that does is just monitors the site, monitors that ground, so this is, this is something I have to do for the other years.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
That's for you. I know this is a long time ago, but my mom raises one legal shutdown, do you remember what they asked me? We don't have to pass it through.
My mom thinks more of it. She's curious. Yeah, it used to be twenty years, but I think EPD, when it got close to twenty years, they got to. And I understand, I may get it on the ground, which is a source that helps the tire string.
All in favor, approve it, say aye.
Aye.
of Cottusa County and the Family Crisis Center of Walker, Day, Cottusa, and Chautuga Counties, all of the counties located in the lookout mountain judicial circuit. The Family Crisis Center provides emergency service to victims of domestic violence, both children and adults. They ensure, provide service to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of victims served. They have partners that assist in providing victims of domestic violence a safe place to go to, and they cooperate and collaborate to ensure that the victims perceive all of the services that they need. Under the memorandum of understanding, the Family Crisis Center agrees to provide all of these services that they've been servicing. The county, as a partner, agrees to make appropriate referrals to the family crisis, to the Family Crisis Center as needed, to cooperate with the Family Crisis Center staff and volunteers in the performance of their duties, and they participate in maintaining all information regarding domestic violence program cases confidential as required by state and federal laws and regulations. There is no financial commitment that goes with this memorandum of understanding.
Do we have a motion?
Salute.
Second. Do we have any questions? All in favor, approve it, say aye.
Aye.
Then the next item is approval of two thousand fourteen splash funds to purchase our sheriff's office vehicles for this year. Requests for proposals have been advertised, we're purchasing procedures, proposals have been received, therefore, we request the expenditure of two thousand fourteen splash funds in the amount of two-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars for sheriff's office vehicles and other equipment. Do we have a motion?
Salute.
Second. Any questions for the sheriff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Sheriff, I've got the vehicle proposal here, is Mountain View, in Reno?
Yes, sir.
I like the Chicago logo, I'm a comedian, isn't that?
Yes, sir, they're doing, they're working with, they're the ones who are actually buying all the equipment, they're doing installations there.
I appreciate that, it creates jobs and keeps money here. Thank you very much.
Sure. Do we have a second? Two thousand fourteen splash. How many miles did we get that place? Um, depends, a hundred fifty to a hundred seventy-five. I mean, you do have those that look on the lens, that constantly have a problem, we might have to cure it beforehand, or we try to go, we use it, get about six to seven years, drive to that.
So the insurance, the insurance settlement is part of the outfit, these costs?
Yes. Yes, they were losses that we received during this fiscal year, so that's why we're asking for that expenditure.
On these vehicles you're purchasing, are they replacing ten vehicles that are being took out, sir?
Yes, sir. Anything else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sheriff. I'm willing to add the next one. So this one would be a piece of equipment from Progressive Communications. What this is for is for some teleconferencing equipment, we're partnering with the Department of Corrections, we're putting in our courthouse, and they are installing in all of the prisons in the state of Georgia to cut down on the need for me to travel all over the state of Georgia bringing prisoners back to court. On any given court term, we're bringing ten or fifteen prisoners back to court, you're talking, it could be up to hundreds of man-hours.
And they cooperate and collaborate to ensure that the victims perceive all of the services that they need. Under the memorandum of understanding, uh, the Family Crisis Center agrees to provide all of these services that they've been servicing. The county as a partner agrees to make appropriate referrals to the families crisis, to the Family Crisis Center as needed, to cooperate with the fa- Family Crisis Center staff and volunteers in the performance of their duties, and they participate in maintaining all information regarding domestic violence program cases confidential as required by state and federal laws and regulations. There is no financial commitment that goes with this memorandum of understanding. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Second. Do you have any questions?
Like one of, one of my pages, my address is in your own.
Okay. Thank you for giving that pitch. Do you have a question, comment? All in favor of approving say aye. Chairman, please. This thing was, uh, service.
I have a couple items for you today. First is an approval of expenditure of vehicle insurance settlement funds, uh, for purchase of some sheriff's office equipment. This was, uh, so we didn't have to take it out of our vehicle and equipment funds. In this, this fiscal year, uh, we received, uh, just over forty-four thousand seven hundred dollars, um, in some insurance settlements, accidents that the vehicles have been involved in, insurance is settled. So, and with that, we'd like to purchase ten digital alloy vehicle cameras at a price of forty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And then we paid for the sheriff's office vehicles installation, a four thousand dollars for a total of forty-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. Do you have any questions for the sheriff? All in favor of approving say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, chairman.
And the next item is, uh, approval of two thousand fourteen splash funds to purchase our sheriff's office vehicles for this year. Uh, requests for proposals have been advertised for purchasing procedures, proposals have been received, uh, so therefore we request the expenditure of two thousand fourteen splash funds in the amount of two hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars for sheriff's office vehicles and vehicle equipment.
Do you have a motion?
So move.
Second. Questions for the sheriff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, Sheriff, uh, I've got the vehicle proposal here. Is Mountain View, uh, in Reno?
Yes, sir.
In the ward?
Yes, sir.
I like the Chicago logo. I'm, I'm commending them there.
Yes, sir, they're doing, what they're working with is they're, they're the ones who're actually buying all the equipment, they're doing installations there.
I appreciate that, it creates jobs and keeps money here.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? There's about two thousand fourteen splash. How many miles did we get that place?
Um, uh, depends, a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five. I mean, you do have those that look on the lens that constantly have a problem, we might have to give it up for a while. We try to go, we, we use it to get about six to seven years, right to about a car.
So the insurance, the insurance settlement is part of the outfit, these costs?
Yes. Yes, they were losses that we received during this fiscal year, so that's why, like, your proposal, so that's why we're asking for that expenditure.
And first, Mr. Chairman, is there a question?
On these vehicles you're purchasing, are they licensed, ten vehicles that are being took out of service?
Yes, sir.
Anything else, sir? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, chairman.
I'm willing on the next one.
You are? You have one more.
Um, so this one would be a, uh, a piece of equipment from Progressive Communications. What this is for is for some teleconferencing equipment, uh, we're partnering with Department of Corrections, we have, we're looking in our courthouse and they are installing in all of the prisons in the state of Georgia to cut down on the need for me to travel all over the state of Georgia bringing prisoners back to court. Uh, on any given court term, we're bringing ten or fifteen prisoners back to court. Uh, you're talking, it could be up to hundreds of man-hours of time, and we're also having to keep them here. Uh, we don't give reimbursement for that. While that time, while they're sitting here waiting on court and waiting on hearings, and sometimes it's as simple as a arraignment hearing, just for the judge to tell them what it is they're charged with, and that can be done over video conferencing. So this is a program that's been started by the Department of Georgia, uh, Georgia Department of Corrections, through this equipment, and then we're also going to be looking at installing them probably at the county jail, and we'll start trying to use it on county, uh, cases as well, but the judges want to start with the state inmates and just use them in those cases for now. And, uh, they don't have them all installed in prisons, but they're willing to move some inmates around in prisons that have them. It's easier for them to move them in circuit than it is for us to have to go get them. So for that, that price is eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. And I believe that expenditure will be coming out of courthouse renovation, what was...
About two thousand fourteen?
Yeah, splash.
Do you have a motion to approve? What's your motion?
Second.
Any questions for the sheriff?
This one, I would, I don't know, I, it's not a question, it's a statement. I went to the facility, the sheriff, several weeks ago, unbelievable at the quality that I can have, uh, and the size of the job. I thought it might have ten or fifteen people there, and I couldn't figure it out, half of them out here in the garbage somewhere. It's unbelievable, had protocol and the professionalism, the, uh, the, and we talked about this very thing, uh, because you've, you've got the, um, possibility of accomplishing other things with the visitation.
Yes.
This is just a natural next step, and I look forward to us being able to put this in the county jail, to where it's known, it takes a, uh...
Yes, sir.
This is, this is a no brainer. Uh, so this right here is going to cut down on your payroll, downtown payroll, and people going to train for?
It'll, it'll cut down on, on the transport, uh, the fuel and, uh, you know, payroll, those deputies are working anyway. That way now those deputies can stay home and help us protect the home front and not have to spend time out running all over Georgia. Yes, sir. And not to mention the security aspect, having, having the transport of victims all over the state, you run a risk every time of them finding out whether they're being transported. Uh, deputies have been killed, P O C officer's been killed, last ones was down in Button County just recently, uh, last year that we found up here in Tennessee.
So much of your liability.
Yes, sir.
Take away that liability.
Yes, sir.
Sell the money on top of that?
Yeah, eleven thousand dollars of expenditure in two nights from top of that kind of liability. Yes, sir.
Thank you, chairman. And all in favor of approving say aye.
Aye.
Sure, thank you. The first item that I have, Mr. Chairman and Board members, is a proposed amendment to the county manager's employment contract. A little bit of history, when the board approved Ms. Vaughn's contract in September of two thousand eighteen, instead of providing a vehicle allowance as we did for the prior county manager, the contract provided that the board proved that we would provide a vehicle for Ms. Vaughn to use for her business purposes. At that time, we only had one available vehicle for use by all five commissioners and all county staff, so the contract provided she was not to use the vehicle to commute back and forth to her home. Since that time, the board has determined it's not feasible just to have one vehicle to be shared by all those people and has purchased a vehicle for use, dedicated use by Ms. Vaughn. And the proposed amendment to her contract would allow her to use the vehicle to commute back and forth to work as other department heads who are on call, potentially on call, like twenty-four seven. And then she is required under I R S regulations to report that as income on her W two. That's calculated according to I R S regulations, and it provides that she can use the vehicle to commute back and forth to her home, or as the I R S says, de minimis, uh, personal trips, which essentially means if you stop on an errand or a grocery store on your way in or out of your commute, it does not mean that you can take it on personal trips out of town, thanks to that nature. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but that is the only proposed amendment to her contract that's been moved in. Everything else will remain the same. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Second. Place some comments for chat. The Department of Labor Department has had this, three of them. To my knowledge, I mean, I know Public Works, for example, that's subject to be called out if there's a storm event, uh, has this, uh, I don't know about other, I haven't taken a survey of all the departments, but my understanding is all the ones that could potentially be called outside of normal business hours, that is. Do you have any questions? Melissa, no comments?
Mr. Stevens?
No.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Next item, Mr. Chairman and Board members, last meeting, the board heard Dennis Thayer, our four nine-one-one director's employment grievance appeal. The board collected documents and heard testimony and was able to ask questions. That grievance appeal at Mr. Thayer's request was held in the open and public portion of the board's meeting. Under our personnel policy, we owe him a decision one way or the other, and since his request for his grievance appeal hearing was in public, this matter is before the board in public to go on a decision. There are essentially two options available to the board under our personnel policy. One option is to uphold or affirm the termination decision by the county manager. The other option would be to overturn the county manager's decision and reinstate Mr. Thayer as the director of mountain. Do we have a motion to either approve? Do we stand by the county manager or does he turn the decision? I have a motion to, uh, affirm the county manager's decision. Do we have a motion to uphold the county manager's decision? We got the second. We have the second. Any questions or comments for the chairman? For Ms. Vaughn?
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you. The last item that I have, Mr. Chairman and Board members, is currently our, our coroner, the county doesn't have an older facility, which is not unusual for a county our size, and currently our coroner, coroner has a rotating arrangement of funeral homes to temporarily store bodies that are under her jurisdiction while they're being transported to the crime lab or turned over to family or under investigation. That arrangement has worked okay, but it hasn't worked the best because sometimes the coroner has to operate outside of normal business hours, and a funeral home doesn't necessarily do that. C H I Memorial, Georgia, which has taken over the operation of what was the old Hudson Medical Center campus, there is more available there. They are willing to enter into an agreement with the county to allow the coroner to store up to four bodies at a time for seventy-two hours each, so she can complete her official duties. There is no monetary charge for us doing that, and there are some parameters on who has custody of the body and how we bring it in and how it's released. But the only time that we would ever incur a charge is if we left a body there more than seventy-two hours, we agreed to pay one hundred dollars per day. And if for some reason, I think they had a problem with another county in the past, not ours, just leaving a body, no one claiming it, and they were forced to incur the legal expense to go through the process to have that body claimed, if for some reason that happened in our county, you know, we'd agree to pay a reimbursement for expenses. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but... Do we have a motion to approve? Is there a motion? Last second. Any questions or comments? Do you want to bring out, what out of, like, surety bond? Well, if, if you can call it a surety bond, in theory, what we say is that our finance department will allocate on our books, we're not going to actually put up a physical bond, uh, we're not going to have to go through that process, we will just allocate up to five thousand dollars set aside for this specific purpose, and for some reason we incur expenses that we would agree to pay out. Do you have questions, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Hey, on this, uh, we talked earlier, uh, this is contingent like the funeral home or clothes, or, or is this something that's what they...
It isn't there, it's still...
Oh, it isn't, well, if you were...
A funeral home is a temporary solution.
Yeah, this employs that.
Okay.
Solicitor, right? Prior to the hospital closing, that's what powers did, because when the hospital closed, except for our bounds, we're all thankful to be here. The funeral home just looks, you see, it occurs.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, chairman.
It's on my mind.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. My clerk's messing with my head. Report from the state court. It's good to see you again.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to be with you this evening. Pardon my glasses of water here, I, I think the pollen has been taking my voice a little bit recently. Um, we've got a couple of new members on board, and I wanted to take the opportunity to sort of give everyone an update, but for you guys in particular, the state court is a very new animal in Coteauza County. Uh, we've only been in existence since July the first of two thousand sixteen. Uh, and so a lot of people may know there's a state court, but don't really know what we do. A state court in, uh, in Georgia is a court of general jurisdiction with regard to misdemeanor criminal cases, and then also civil liability cases like lawsuits, auto accidents, medical malpractice, things of that nature. We share that jurisdiction with the superior court, but the superior court, like in the civil arena, would handle divorce, landline disputes, things like that, where the state court would not touch that. One of the big reasons that, uh, I guess two of the five of you voted to create a state court, uh, was to take burdens off of other courts. And we've actually taken cases, uh, where there were real challenges in the superior court, the probate court, and the magistrate court. We've actually taken case load burdens off of each of those three courts, uh, and are handling those cases now as the court of primary jurisdiction. Uh, our judge, of course, is Ron Gulart, he was here, uh, earlier with me. Uh, I'm the solicitor general, they call it, it's a real fancy name for a prosecutor, that's, that's all it is. Uh, each of us was appointed by Nathan Deal in two thousand sixteen and then stood for election this past fall in two thousand eighteen, and it was the best kind of election because neither one of us was opposed. We meet on a weekly basis, uh, Thursday mornings at nine o'clock, we handle traffic tickets. Uh, people are invited to come to court if they have, uh, some question about a ticket or if they want to come to some alternative resolution other than just paying it online. You can always go to cotusatickets.com and just get your ticket. Uh, but if you do want to come to court, uh, we have court almost every Thursday morning at nine o'clock, closer to holiday or some other, uh, real conflict. Ten thirty on Thursday mornings, then we do arraignments. And arraignments are, uh, where folks who have been charged with a fingerprintable criminal offense, not just a speeding ticket, let's say a domestic violence, or misdemeanor theft, or shoplifting, or other crimes, where you go to jail, uh, my office prepares a formal accusation, looks very similar to an indictment, that's filed with the clerk of the court, people are sent notice, they come to court, we serve these documents on them, and then they either enter a negotiated plea, uh, on that day, or they enter a not guilty, and we send them there for a trial, either a bench trial or a jury trial. Uh, and then, uh, one of the more important things that we do on every Thursday that we have court are jail cases. One of the concerns, I think, that the sheriff in particular had, uh, was the length of time that people spend in his jail. And as y'all are keenly aware, that represents a significant cost, uh, to the taxpayers. I think, uh, is fifty dollars a day, am I right, sheriff?
Yes.
And so for every day that we can get an inmate out early, if it's appropriate in any case, that's literally money in the bank that, that I would send you as, as the commissioners and the stewards of our county funds would be happy to hear about. Uh, I'm pleased to report that as of this past Thursday in two thousand nineteen, uh, we'd have brought two hundred and forty inmates over to court for what, by old standards, would have been an early appearance. Uh, my office works diligently in conjunction with the sheriff's department, his staff has been fantastic in their responsiveness to us. When you imagine that a normal case, we might take sixty to ninety days to put together, you ask for a report, you ask for any results from the crime lab, whatever. On these jail cases, my staff looks through the jail desk on Monday, we submit requests, and by Tuesday or Wednesday, at the latest, we've got the cases essentially assembled for those cases, uh, for those inmates. Uh, those that hit my desk on Wednesday, and I go through and I prove to make sure we've got everything that we need, and then I go ahead and prepare the accusations, and we bring the ladies and gentlemen over from the jail. Uh, and then I'll discuss with each of them a proposed resolution. Uh, and in the vast majority of the cases, uh, we're able to achieve resolutions that get them back to working, supporting their families, and not on the public dole in the jail. Uh, and so I'm pleased to report that, uh, as of this past Thursday, there were two hundred and forty inmates that we were able to help in that regard. If you do a little bit of math, one day per person saved would be twelve thousand dollars, just one day per person. And we know just from a practical perspective that it's in fact much more than one day per person. There were cases in the past before the state court came into existence when a man or a woman might sit there two, three, four weeks. And so I took the liberty of doing the math for one week, on average, for each person, and that would be eighty-four thousand dollars just in the first four months, uh, of this year that the state court has been able to save. Um, total cases that have been opened this year, and this includes traffic tickets, uh, criminal offenses, that type thing, it's one thousand five hundred and thirty-seven as of this afternoon. Uh, my office, through its victim witness coordinator, has served over a hundred victims. Uh, there have been more than three hundred accusations filed, remember, an accusation is that form of charging instrument that looks kind of like an indictment, uh, and then we already talked about the jail cases. Um, we have jury trials four times a year. Uh, that's a week where we call in jurors, the clerk will notice, you know, seventy to a hundred, a hundred and twenty people to come in to sit in his jurors in cases. Uh, and then, uh, for those individuals that have requested jury trials, uh, we hold those jury trials, and at this point, we've, this year, we're doing it four times, or four weeks of jury trials. Uh, we do bench trials more often than that, and those are not set on any sort of set cycle. And instead, the clerk will assemble the, the cases where folks have requested a bench trial, remember, a bench trial is just in front of the judge, there's no jury sitting over there. And, uh, when we get to twenty, we sit down and we pick a day, and then we notice those twenty folks in to that day of, of bench trials. Uh, and so we've already done three or four sets of bench trials this year, maybe five, I'm not sure, I didn't, I should have looked in particular, but, uh, we do that more often than the jury trials. Uh, one other thing that, that, uh, we do in our court, uh, which is sort of an alternative resolution, uh, is what's called a pre-trial diversion. And it's in situations where, uh, a person's conduct does not rise to the level of severity that would necessitate necessarily a guilty plea or crime, would not necessitate incarceration, anything like that, and coupled with that is a victim who is seeking to actually help the individual who committed the, the, the crime. Uh, in a pre-trial diversion, like let's say the domestic violence, where a couple is staying together, they're... In a pre-trial diversion, like let's say the domestic violence, where a couple is staying together, there was an incident, there is an issue that's there, obviously, that they want to reconcile, they want to stay together. Whichever was the victim, and not surprising, well, maybe surprising, I don't know, we have about many female and male victims, the victim is really wanting to help the person that we're prosecuting. And so we'll enter into an agreement where that person will go get anger management counseling, for instance. They'll pay an administrative fee, which, from my perspective, quite honestly, is designed to be punitive. It's designed to hurt that person a little bit as a deterrent to improper behavior in the future. But then ultimately, if they check the boxes off that we've agreed they need to do, which gives my office some comfort, like for instance, with anger management counseling. If they've sat through and successfully completed that six or eight week course of counseling, I have some assurance that maybe this won't happen in the future. But then they're not saddled with that criminal conviction on the record, which makes employment a real challenge. One of the things that I've really have tried hard to do in our court, and I'm always open to suggestions and input, is to make the actions of our court and the State Court, because we don't have to deal with the serious felonies, and it's a blessing that we don't. But to make the actions of our court actually make our community a better place in the long run. That's kind of the core principle that I try to approach prosecution in this court. I spent twenty of my twenty-three years doing serious felonies. And it's a blessing not to have that anymore, either to prosecute or defend. And so to the extent that we can, I want to use our court as a tool to make our communities better, put people in a better place in the long run. I've sat and actually had conversations with defendants before and said, where do you want to be in five years? And it makes them think thoughts they haven't thought before, because they were just thinking to the next beer or thinking to the next whiskey. Where do you want to be in five years and what, what steps can I force you to do that are going to put you in a better position? So anyway, that's kind of the summary. I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all have and thank you for the opportunity.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right, are you ready for your time, Neil?
Sure. I have the fiscal year two thousand nineteen revenue report for the seventh month ended April. The lost receipts for the first seven months of fiscal year two thousand nineteen exceeded the budget three hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars, or nine point six three percent, and exceeded the same period actuals for prior year, three hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred and seventy dollars, or eight point seven five percent. Cumulative loss receipts for the most recent twelve month period exceeded the prior twelve month period, five hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars, or seven point four two percent. The current month exceeded the same period prior year, sixteen thousand six oh eight, or two point five two percent. The sploes receipts for the fifty-seven month period of the twenty-fourteen sploes cycle were forty-seven million five hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars, or eighty-three point four two percent of budget. Sploes receipts for the most recent twelve months exceeded the prior twelve months, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars, or seven point four two percent. The current month exceeded the same period prior year, twenty-three thousand seven oh six, or two point five two percent.
Any questions for us? Pretty good, Carl Louie, right? He's helping call for forty in on that.
Oh, really?
Do you have any comments?
Much. Great relief. Sheriff, everybody would like to. Like everyone, we're, we're going up. Appreciate that, thank you.
Anybody else? I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out today, showing support for your town and your concerns and tried to do a good job and honor those. For a fact, great here. This board will never be one that wants to stop us, that they go against. This is a board that encourages people coming to meetings and to speak their minds. The one thing we ask is that we do respect. And it's not a time where we want to bash people, it's not a time where we want to call people out. It's a time that if we have a concern about our county, genuine issues, that we address with respect with each other. And we promise to do the same thing to these people. But it is not a time to get up there and just beat on people. It seems like the climate of this nation has just gotten where it's been to everyone, or disrespect. I don't want to see this in this county. This county, Touson County, is better than any place I've ever been. I, I go and I see a hundred and fifty-nine other counties and their leaders and I know how they act. We don't have that problem. We are blessed to live in this county and we're going to respect each other. That's all I ask. I appreciate everyone coming and I appreciate everyone being concerned. They'll just reach out and become a member and we will never forget it. And I respect and I appreciate.
A lot of people have to get in this man.
And I appreciate it. But I just want everybody to be respectful of each other, that's all I ask. And we will never be a board that tries to stop people, but I respect y'all's people. Anybody else?
I'd like to say, Gary, when you mentioned the two corrections officers at Button County, that happened on Tuesday morning about a mile from our office, where I said, with this, all the activity going on around me. I'm kind of unique in the fact, when I, when I go to, when I went to Savannah, I got to see my commissioner. I have commissioners that are in Button County. And I get to, I get to see what happens in another county during meetings. And let me tell you, we are, I am so proud of this county, our county. I don't want to sound, I don't want to get all emotional or cliché, but this is an amazing county. And our problems are so minuscule compared to some of these other counties. And then the bottom line is, this is not a board of commissioners meeting. This is a citizens' meeting to watch your board perform the criminal duties of the county. This is, this is why there's more chairs out there than there are up here. So I encourage you to keep coming, I appreciate every single person, I appreciate all the emails and phone calls. And I just want to, I want to say a [inaudible].
And you know where the staff is located, Mr. Sheriff?
Uh, I, I didn't know, well, I didn't know, I knew we were on here at the lobby, which again, coming from, looking at Button County, they're not. I'll be back.
The only counties that are lower than us in taxes, that will agree with me. Gentlemen, if somebody else has anything to say, the motion to go ahead and take a concession or have a reverse now, there will be an opening session.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Ms. Vaughn, you are on for a session.
Good evening, gentlemen. So after we've gone through the hiring, we've gone through the interview process, and I would like to recommend that the board approves the hiring of Carol Roberts as our new CFO. And she would begin employment May the twentieth, would be her first day.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, so a move. Second.
Do we have any questions? And have you years of experience with this?
She has eleven years of experience in government, she actually lives in Walker County.
Any other questions? All in favor of approving this hire, I'm less than [inaudible].
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion. Second.
All in favor of adjourned, say aye?
Aye.
See you soon, the original. Thank you.